To order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of city council, all are present, and if you will stand, Chief Fitzgerald will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some certificates of appreciation that we need to give tonight. Wanda Battles. Want to come up? Wanda is the president of HCC Southwest College Student Chamber of Commerce, and I'll let her kind of tell you about the students that we're going to have.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Wanda Battles, and I am the president of Houston Community College Southwest Location. We have established a student organization at Houston Community College. Our purpose is to build collaboration with businesses and elected officials and community leaders in supporting our HCC students.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. We've called these students. Are they all here?
Some of them are here.
Some of them are here. All right. If you're here, if you'll come up. Chakil Khan.
She's not here.
Not here. Kayla Gibson.
She's not here.
Natasha Robertson.
She's not here.
We don't have any news?
Karen, she's here.
Okay. Karen's here?
She is our advisor.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I know she is your advisor. Come on up here, Karen.
Sorry.
And these, it says, "Congratulations, this certificate is to commend," and Karen's part, "advocating economic and civic interest in our community with the Houston Community College Chamber of Commerce."
The last name is Kozart.
Loretta Kozart. Is it Loretta? Is that right?
Yes.
All right. Wanda's here. Hey, aren't you special? You're representing all the others, right? Did they let you come up here and say they didn't want to come?
Yeah.
Okay. So you don't have to sit at the chair.
They look outnumbered.
Yeah, okay. By the way, Donna is our liaison to HCC, so I don't even want to get in his picture.
I'm with the PR department.
Yeah, that's right.
We're all PR. She's the one that invited us.
I tried to get you lined up here. Get you lined and come up here and do that. She didn't want to do it.
She's the one that invited us, so we would like her to be part of this.
I know.
No, I did say hey.
Donna sent me in the grease. Huh?
I said, "I guess I could do it."
No, she said, "If I was offended." Very good. All right.
Thank you so much.
You're up, Wes.
The next, we're here to celebrate and recognize Cynthia Conley for her retirement. Cynthia, where are you? There you are. Come on up here.
Have a seat, Cynthia.
I don't have a whole lot to say, except for...
You look good in there.
Cynthia has been with the city for 27 years, and I just, I wanted to think back of what 27 years ago would be. And in 1986, Internet mail access protocol was defined for email in 1986. So that, think of where you were, just like there's an event this Friday that everybody remembers where they were on that day. The Human Genome Project began in 1986. IBM unveils the first laptop computer in 1986. A down thing here is a space shuttle Challenger. You know where they were? Yeah. Mad cow disease was first identified.
Mad cow disease.
And Ferris Bueller's Day Off was released. I don't know if you know it. And Oprah Winfrey Show began. So just to give it perspective. Some of Cynthia's responsibilities have been getting, assisting with the accomplishment of getting 26 consecutive GFOA awards for the audit and for the budget. She also maintains our utility accounting and billing, and very difficult because of area lawyers in the room, and, but, she's, 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 was very instrumental for us applying the methods in which they contain. She's also managed our grants, including CDBG block grants and FEMA, which is a very, a full-time job. She's also knowledgeable of all aspects of the accounting department and helped everyone try to learn new things as best that we could do going forward. She is a very loyal and passionate about protecting the taxpayers' money, and she's going to be a great, she is a great asset for the city and for the finance department, and she's going to be a great loss for the city. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to say a few things as well. When Cynthia first made the announcement three or four months ago, we were in evaluation process, and I was saying to myself, as her supervisor for the last nine years, how do you evaluate an employee on a one-year basis who's been here, who knows everything, who's probably one of the top five or 10 employees who's ever been here throughout the whole city? How do you evaluate an employee on a one-year basis? It's almost impossible. And, you know, just, just the knowledge she's brought to Missouri City, the work, the effort, you know, if I were to grade her, she'd get top, you know, a 10 in every category there is, even though we scale on, we're on a scale of five. It's just, just, just the amount of help and everything she's done. She was always a faithful and loyal employee, and, you know, whenever we needed something, she'd, she'd get right on it. It's unbelievable. And, you know, I was talking with her family downstairs a little while ago, and it kind of hit me, you know. I said, you know, "She's, she's leaving in a few days," or a few, in, less, a little over a week, and, you know, I said, "If, you know, if Missouri City wasn't here," you know, "if Missouri City is here, it's, it's because of Cynthia." So, really appreciate it. And Dorothy, you know, you too. But we really appreciate everything Cynthia's done. You know, I really enjoyed working with her. She's a great employee. I'm going to miss her every day, and hopefully she comes back.
Mayor, may I get some detail? Cynthia, Cynthia, what goes with the chair is that every time you need somebody to rock it, you call the mayor on his cellphone. That is the agreement. We vote on that anyway.
I got one of those. I got one of those when I got a grandbaby, I got one of them. Come on, Cynthia.
I'd just like to say, 27 years, this has been a second family to me. There's many people's faces that I see out here that I've known all 27 of those years. Am I going to miss the work? Maybe. Am I going to miss the people? Yes, definitely. When I first came to work here, all of us were downstairs on the first floor. We expanded up to the second floor. The city's grown tremendously, and I know that one day soon, we'll envelop Sienna and we'll go, grow tremendously again. So it's been an interesting...
27 years.
27 years, and a blossoming of the city, and the leadership of the city and the employees who work here. If it wasn't for the little guys down in the trenches, the big guys up here couldn't do it. So it's nice to see all the different employees here and how they have come up through the ranks and developed into wonderful leaders that the city has today. So, thank you very much. I've enjoyed it.
So she doesn't forget on the back of the chair, it says, "logo," and it says, "Cynthia Conley, 1986 to 2013." So enjoy your retirement. It's great.
Okay, there's the edge. Okay.
They're not interfering.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Mayor and council, members of the audience, I'd like to get Nikki Hayes up here. Nikki Hayes is retiring from the city after 23 years as a street technician, too. And I've been waiting about 22 and a half to tell this story about Nikki. In fact, Nikki's one of the first people that I met when I was here, and back then we were a little shorthanded one day, and they asked me if I could run a bulldozer in the bottom of a lake to push silt up to the track hoe. And I told the street superintendent, "Yeah, I haven't done that in a while. Let's go." He said, "Fine, Nikki will bring you to lunch, bring you back in at the end of the day." So I'm pushing the bulldozer. I noticed that the pile's getting pretty high and the track hoe's not running, and I looked around, and Nikki and the crew had gone to lunch and left me in the bottom of the lake. So I'd like to thank you for saving me from a couple pounds that... That smile you see is, is what I remember about Nikki, and I always will remember about Nikki. You can, "Hey, Nikki, climb in the bottom of this and grease that, and no problem. I got it." One of the best equipment operators I have seen, won the American Public Works Association Equipment Operator Award a couple years ago. Going to be sorely missed in many ways. Nikki is the heart and soul of our street department. I'd like to get Sharon Valiant up here, who, that area of responsibility has hers, and let her say a few words.
Okay. I can only just add to what Scott said. Nikki's always got a smile on his face, always, no matter what. And I've, I've enjoyed working with him for the past 20 years. It's been a long time. It's been a great time. Nikki's that "I can do it" kind of guy. You want something done, you ask Nikki. He says, "I can do it. I can do." So that, that's the, that's the kind of guy he is. As, as everybody, all of us know, and maybe not many of you know, that Nikki is a Dallas Cowboy fan. And we don't hold that against him, not at all, because I'm a Dallas Cowboy fan, too, as well as the mayor. There he is. Anyway, and as you all know, the Dallas Cowboy symbol is this big star, and, and that's what Nikki is. He's a star. He's a star performer. Nikki, thank you for being part of our team.
If Nikki's family could come up, I believe there, in the audience. Come on.
Elton, you don't want me to see you. You better come up here. What I gotta say? All I gotta say was a real honor to work for Scott, Sharon, Enrico, and Elton, you know. I know I'm gonna miss it, but, you know, I got something else. I got another dream to do, and I appreciate working for the city. Thank you all.
Beautiful clock that Nikki is going to get to put somewhere. It won't fit on the dash of your truck. I've offered Nikki Hayes an appreciation of 23 years of hard work and dedication to the city of Missouri City, 1990 to 2013. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're ready.
Come on.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, the year's a service now, too, my clothing right there.
Texas City Police Chief, Chief Robert Burby is going to do the presentation for the Texas Police Chiefs Association. Without any further ado, Chief Burby.
Thank you, Chief Fitzgerald. I'm Fitzjoe. Mayor, council members, citizens of Missouri City, good evening. I'm going to have to read some of this because it's required because of the best practice standards. My name is Robert Burby. I'm the chief of police of the city of Texas City. I'm currently the vice chair of a Texas Law Enforcement Best Practice Committee. I'm honored tonight to represent the Texas Police Chiefs Association. The Texas Police Chiefs Association made up of over 1,000 police professionals throughout the state of Texas. It's dedicated to improve the delivery of quality services throughout the state in, in policing. I'm here this evening to present the Missouri City Police Department with a certificate of recognition for continuing to maintain their compliance with the Texas law enforcement best practice, the business of best practice for the law enforcement for the past four years. Several years ago, the Texas Police Chiefs Association developed an accreditation program for the Texas law enforcement state. Many of you know about the accreditation program for schools, universities, and hospitals. They are all programs of professional excellence, all require proof of compliance with a set of professional standards. This is a voluntary program, whereas agencies must prove they meet 165 very difficult standards. These standards address the full range of law enforcement operations such as use of force, protection of citizens' rights, vehicle pursuits, property and evidence management, and patrol and investigative operations. This program has become the new gold standard for professional law enforcement in Texas and agencies across the state who are working diligently to make these requirements. Four years ago, the Missouri Police Department became one of the first in the state to become recognized in this practice. It was not an easy practice to do. The agency has to do a complete audit of all policies and operations in order to meet these standards. Since that time, the agency has submitted annual reports that were reviewed and ensured they continue to do that. The Missouri Police Department, City Police Department, has continued to provide effective services. In October, the review process completed with these, with three trained assessors, police chiefs, and command officers from other parts of our great state, who spent three days making another onsite assessment to make sure that these practices were still being complied with. These assessors interviewed staff, inspected facilities and operations, rode with field officers, and ensured compliance with all standards. Their report then sent to the recognition committee, which comprised of nine active police chiefs from around the state, who reviewed the reports and voted to award recognition status again. The vote was unanimous. During this process, the Missouri City Police Department has continuously proved that it meets or exceed all applicable standards for professional law enforcement. Of the over 2,800 law enforcement agencies in the state of Texas, only 85 agencies have achieved recognition status. Only 26 have been re-recognized, which is what we're here to do tonight. This afternoon, we are officially recognizing the Missouri City Police Department for their outstanding performance. They've become the 25th agency in the state to achieve recognized status for five continuous years. What does this mean to your community? The recognition program assures that both city management and the citizens of a city that their police department is operating in a manner that reflects the current best practices in Texas law enforcement. It means your police department is continually striving for professional excellence. It means your police department is one of the very best in the state. At this time, I am very proud to ask Chief Joe Fitzgerald to join me and where I can present the award.
Before the award presentation, let me ask that the police officers in the room come up, please. Captain Williams, Assistant Chief Barison, Captain Williams, Kevin Williams, Assistant Chief Jemison, please come up. Hugo, as well. I asked them to come up because achieving this is a work that goes throughout the organization. I mean, from the very bottom of the organization up, in many ways dictates whether we are, we're in compliance with the standards. And like Chief Burby said, it's more than just being in compliance. We achieve or exceed all of the standards, and I drive a mean, mean water truck here. I have guys that are working here, day in and day out, and they know what the level of expectation is here in Missouri City, and that's because of you, the citizens in the community. We raise the level of expectation, and I'm very happy to say that I'm a part of this team here. The team did it, and it wasn't just, you know, from the top down. It's from the very bottom of the organization up, and I lament the fact that Michael Curry, he's our recognition program manager, couldn't be here tonight. His wife took ill. But he was thrust into a position where he had to make sure that the auditing process in the Missouri City Police Department went well. And it was within the first week or two of his tenure as being the, the recognition program manager. He was tasked with preparing us for this. So he deserves, you know, a hand as well as these gentlemen, because without them, from top to bottom, from bottom to top, we would not have achieved re-recognition. So thank you all.
It also says that I have to read this, and I've said the, the very best thing you can do is stand for something that's great, and Chief Fitzgerald, your staff, I know how hard it is going through the process a couple times myself. I'm very proud to present you and your staff and the city of Missouri City with this award.
Got a document?
All you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great recognition for the city. One other thing that we need to recognize are the eating places in Missouri City that also go beyond the norm in keeping their restaurants clean and their food prepared in the way it should, and twice a year, every six months, we have an opportunity to recognize those restaurants in the city of Missouri City that have achieved excellence in, in their food preparation and just overall cleanliness. So come on up. And some of these I'm going to read are multiple winners, so, and some of them are not going to be here because they're serving food right now. Bakery Doughnut at 2703 Cartwright Road scored a 96, and they're a multiple winner. If you're here, when I call your name, just come on up to the front. These guys get up awfully early to make doughnuts, and I understand why they're not here. Billy, yeah, Billy's Doughnuts at 8817 Highway 6. They scored 100, and they're a multiple winner. Blue Bonnet Grill. Come on up here, Ken. At the city center. Ken knows what the rules are at the city center. But anyway, they scored a 95, and it's the second time that Ken and his staff have won an award. Brooklyn Pizzeria, 4717 Highway 6, scored a 95, and this is the second time for them. Burger King, 10,00210 Highway 6, had 100, and they're a multiple winner. Carl's Jr., 6231 Highway 6, scored 100, and then their second time. Chick-fil-A, 6124 Highway 6, scored a 95, and I can't tell you how many times they've been, I can tell you this much, they've been here every single time we've given the award. Chili's at 5788 Highway 6, scored 100. They're also a multiple winner. Chipotle Mexican Grill, 6245 Highway 6, 98, a multiple winner. Coco Plaza by Aura, 3340, 1092. They scored 100, and it's their second time. El Vaquero, scored 100, and it's their second time. Five Guys Burgers, scored 100, and it's their second time. Food for Thought, 3340 FM 1092, scored 100, and it's their second time. Colochi Factory, 6215 Highway 6, scored 100, and they're a multiple winner. Mahemia Indian Bistro, 2258 FM 1092, a 98, and it's their second time. Pepperoni's, 5832 Highway 6, scored a 97, and they're a multiple winner. Pepperoni's in Sienna, which is 4225, Sienna Parkway, scored a 96, and they're a multiple winner. Pizza Hut, 2292 Texas Parkway, 95, and they're a multiple winner. QQ, QQ China, 10,00330 Highway 6, a 95, and they're a multiple winner. Raisin Canes, 3833 FM 1092, 98, and this was their first time. Red Oak Grill, 511 Highway 6, scored a 98, and it's their second time. Sonic, 5805 Highway 6, scored a 98, and that's their first time. Star Santa Magrill, 4811 Highway 6, scored 100, and it's their second time. Subway, 4225 Sienna Parkway, scored a 96, and they're a multiple winner. Taco Bell, Pizza Hut, 5511 Highway 6, scored a 98, and they're a multiple winner. Whataburger at 8820 Highway 6, scored a 95, and they're a multiple winner. And finally, but not last, Wingstop at 2240 Texas Parkway, scored a 95, and they're a multiple winner. Did I miss anybody that didn't want to come up here and get something? Didn't I call Whataburger?
Yeah.
I did. He's just so good. Give these guys a big hand. Brooklyn Pizzeria, 4717 Highway 6 scored a ninety-five, and this is the second time for them. Burger King, 10,00210 Highway 6 had a hundred, and they're a multiple winner. Carl's Jr., 6231 Highway 6 scored a hundred, and then their second time. Chick-fil-A, 6124 Highway 6 scored a ninety-five, and I can't tell you how many times they've been, I can tell you this much, they've been here every single time we've given the award. Chili's at 5788 Highway 6 scored a hundred, they're also a multiple winner. Chipotle Mexican Grill, 6245 Highway 6, ninety-eight, a multiple winner. Coco Plaza by Aura, 3340, 1092, they scored a hundred, and it's their second time. El Baccaro scored a hundred, and it's their second time. Five Guys Burgers scored a hundred, and it's their second time. Food For Thought, 3340 FM 1092 scored a hundred, and it's their second time. Colochi Factory, 6215 Highway 6 scored a hundred, and they're a multiple winner. Mahemia Indian Bistro, 2258 FM 1092, a ninety-eight, and it's their second time. Pepperoni's, 5832 Highway 6 scored a ninety-seven, and they're a multiple winner. Pepperoni's in Sienna, which is 4225, Sienna Parkway scored a ninety-six, and they're a multiple winner. Pizza Hut, 2292 Texas Parkway, ninety-five, and they're a multiple winner. QQ China, 10,00330 Highway 6, a ninety-five, and they're a multiple winner. Raisin Canes, 3833 FM 1092, ninety-eight, and this was their first time. Red Oak Grill, 511 Highway 6 scored a ninety-eight, and it's their second time. Sonic, 5805 Highway 6 scored a ninety-eight, and that's their first time. Star Santa McGrill, 4811 Highway 6 scored a hundred, and it's their second time. Subway, 4225 Sienna Parkway scored a ninety-six, and they're a multiple winner. Popeyes, 10,00220 Highway 6 scored a ninety-six, and they're a multiple winner. Taco Bell, Pizza Hut, 5511 Highway 6 scored a ninety-eight, and they're a multiple winner. Whataburger at 8820 Highway 6 scored a ninety-five, and they're a multiple winner. And finally, but not last, Wingstop at 2240 Texas Parkway scored a ninety-five, and they're a multiple winner. Did I miss anybody that didn't want to come up here and get something? Didn't I call Whataburger?
Yeah.
I did. He's just so good. Give these guys a big hand.
I just want to thank everybody for their help in keeping the score up and taking care of all the customers in Missouri City. They're very hard workers, they really try very hard, and I just want to thank them.
Well, they get scored by food temperatures, the cleanliness of the restaurant, their equipment,
maintenance of the equipment, the overall appearance of the restaurant, make sure everything is clean, sanitized, and, you know, just, they keep trying real hard. I mean, it's real hard.
And if they're a third time or better to be here.
Yes, yeah, over ninety-five to be here, yes. Thank you.
Anyway, you know, we post these scores on our website, by the way. You can go on the Missouri City's website, and over on the right-hand side, you'll see health scores, and you can see the health scores for the last, I guess, three, I think the last three inspections on any restaurant in Missouri City, and there's, what? Three hundred of them in there. So, this is really the cream of the crop when you score ninety-five or better. So, these guys, when you go in their restaurant, you're going to see that score somewhere in their restaurant. But take time to thank them for what they do, because it really does take an effort, because they don't know when she's coming. It can be early in the morning, be late in the afternoon, but when she walks in, it's got to be that way. So, what they're doing here is not something they do because they know she's coming. They do it because they do it all the time. So, congratulations to all of them. Get everybody together. to have, where we gave beautification awards to businesses within the city that went beyond the norm in beautifying the outside of their business.
And Missouri City Green has taken that on, and that's one where they talked about it at their last meeting.
Good, and we'll start giving awards for those people that have done some extra for their landscaping and stuff. All right. Item four on the agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address counsel on any issue that's not an agenda item. I did not have anyone sign up. Item five are staff reports. Item five A is a presentation of the quarterly investment report for the period ending on September 30th, 2013.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the quarterly investment report ending for the period September 30th, 2013. Just kind of quickly going through it, this is required by the Public Investments Act. It indicates investment balances at a point in time, as well as comparisons to prior quarters and prior years. It demonstrates our compliance with the city's investment policy. This slide shows the makeup of the portfolio, bank deposits of $2.3 million, pools, 5.1 million CDs, $22,000 agencies is the majority of it, $39 million, as you see in the blue part of the pie chart. This slide is showing the transformation of, from over five quarters of the, yellow is the agencies, and we've kind of dipped down, and we had some funds in March, and we've drawn down on those, and we'll be getting tax revenues to supplant that, but we're on target for cash flow needs. Balances, balance comparisons, we've drawn down on pools by $5.5 million. That is just paying bills. This next slide is a comparison over five quarters, as you see, if you, the checking account, text pool, logic CDs, and agencies. The agencies have the effective yield of 3.688 in the first, the fifth, the five quarters back, and currently has 2.807 compared to the checking account or text, any of those rates. We certainly see the advantage of having those in agency. Here's a yield trend line. The red is the effective yield of what we have in investments, and what's compared down at the bottom is the ninety-day T-bell and the text pool rates and the logic rates that we have. So, we're showing the difference there. Maturity schedules of the total portfolio, we have sixteen percent in overnight liquidity, and then we have fifty-eight percent is between 180 days and 365. So, with the, in December and January, we'll be getting a high inflow of tax receipts. And the last page is an outlook of the bond market, just something that we've got from the logic newsletter. Equity and bond markets were volatile in the third quarter as investors focused on the Federal Reserve meeting in mid-September, and as you know, and the risk associated with fiscal policy negotiations in Washington. Federal Reserve's decision to delay tapering was a notable surprise to the markets. The majority of the market's participants had predicted that the Fed would announce a reduction in its monthly asset purchases program at its September meeting, but instead they did not. They maintained its current policy in leaving monthly asset purchases of treasuries and mortgage-backed securities at $85 billion a month. So, we continue on. Any questions? Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Doing a better job. All right. Item six is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
Taken.
Mayor Prokhor made the motion. Councilman Wynn made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Item seven are public hearings and related actions, 7A. There are no zoning public hearings, 7B, there's no public hearings. Item eight, there are no appointments. Item nine are authorizations. Item nine A is to consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate and the mayor to execute a contract for municipal court and alarm fees and fees collecting services.
Mayor, members of council, I have a presentation I'm going to provide to you outlining the process we've undertaken in getting to where we are tonight. Okay. I want to begin with the, a little bit of the history, and it's a short history. In 2011, and we back up to 2003, is when the law came effective that allowed for cities to have collection agencies work on their behalf to go out and collect court fines, delinquent court fines, or, excuse me, court fines that were delinquent. And so, we began that process, and in 2011, city council awarded a five-year contract for court and alarm collections for five years again to Linebarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson with annual renewals with portfolio collection rates that we requested of twenty-five percent for municipal court fees, ten percent for false alarm fees and fines. In 2012, city council authorized the renewal of the contract, and with one-year commitment with the same collection terms as the original contract that was outlined before. September 3rd, 2013, council directed staff to solicit court and alarm collection vendors. We've undertaken that process and go through what we have done in regard to that. On September 11th, we advertised with an RSQ for municipal court and alarm collection services. September 18th, advertised for the second time. October 1st, we opened RSQs, and from October 1st through the 30th, staff committee reviewed and scored eight written proposals that were received by the city, ranked them, and interviewed the top three respondents. November 11th, staff met with the long-range planning committee, council long-range planning committee, and provided their recommendation. The committee then forwarded the recommendation before city council tonight. And then, it is before you tonight for consideration, and I do want to remind you that something you had asked at the same time about taking this out to bid, or for quotes, you'd also, qualifications, excuse me, that you asked that we follow this same type of process, and we intend to, February of 2014, for the collection of delinquent property taxes, which we currently have as a separate contract. The, as I said, we undertook a valuation process on the proposals that were received, and looking at that, we had three finalists that we narrowed it down to from the original eight, and for those three finalists, we looked at qualifications.
There were eight original?
Yes, sir. And we narrowed it to three, and then looked at those three based on qualifications, past experience, depth of experience, ability to provide legal counsel on collection matters, location of the firm to the city, in reference to the city, references from other communities that have utilized their services in the past relationship with the city. The scoring of the three finalists' proposals were as follows, and a staff team was consisting, again, of five members. They were from court administration, city attorney's office, and administration. We interviewed three, again, the three highest of those, and of the eight proposals, and below you see the scoring that was given to each of those. One thing I might point out, that it was, I was looking at it today, and it just, something that was unique and I thought interesting, was that, to show you the distribution of scoring and how it was very tight, the two top ones were separated by only three points, 467 points and 464 points. Also, you'll notice on the information I provided to you that there is an asterisk on some of the different scores, and what I wanted to represent to you there is that the distribution of the number-one score of each evaluator, there were two that evaluated Linebarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson as their number one. McCrery, for one of them, for one of the evaluators, was their number one, and two, Saw, Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins, and Mott, is their number one. So, the distribution was varied and wide. Again, in addition to the interview process that was undertaken with qualifications that I had mentioned, the firms provided, and we requested their three-year forecast for collections for court fees and false alarms, and provided that to you. We wanted to try to quantify that to a number that we could take a look at, because it does vary based on the type of collection fee that there is, and so, we averaged it over the three years, and you will see that we summed the two fee types. For instance, as an example, Purdue was forty-three percent on average for court fee collections, and false alarm fees at 27.33, giving us a total of 70.33. Linebarger was 44.16 in regard to court collection fees across the three-year average, and 26.5 for the false alarm fees across the three-year average, giving us 70.66. Just trying to quantify it to give it something to compare a number against one another. We took that information, and based on those factors that I just went through and mentioned to you, we recommended collections contract be awarded to Linebarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson. This information, again, was presented to the council long-range planning subcommittee on November 11th. The vote was two to one, with Chairman Emery and Member White recommending award to Linebarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson. Member Ellicott was not in attendance, but he submitted his recommendation for Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins, and Mott. Be happy to answer any questions you may have, and Chairman, if the chairman has anything as well.
Bill, is it, is it a secret who, I mean, not by number, but who the five people were?
Yes, sir. That is myself, Caroline Kelly, former court administrator Kathy Haney, Kathy Gernt, who is our accounting manager, and Maricela Navarro, who is our interim court administrator.
Okay. It is also, Bill, under the, under that, what the mayor talked about, it was, it was two for Linebarger and two for Purdue, and one was for someone else? Is that the way the final recommendation came through on that, or?
No, sorry, what I was saying is that for the number one, there were two that had recommended, their number one being Linebarger, two for Purdue, and one for Valseca, so.
Okay. Can you explain that rate? Because it shows that Linebarger's rate is at 70.66 and Purdue's rate at 70.33. So, to me, it looks like a .33 difference.
Correct. It's just the sum of the two types of collection fees, and I was just trying to, excuse me, I was just trying to bring it to a number that you could compare for quantitative basis. That's all.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation by staff and issue the contract to Linebarger.
Okay. Councilman Emery made the motion, Mayor Prokhor and White made the second, now we can talk about it.
I'm sorry, Robin, I wanted to get that out so that you could get your questions in, in the appropriate order. Let me, I guess, make a couple of comments. When we brought the long-range committee together to take a look at the results, one of the things that I saw that I guess was, I think, as Robin, Councilman Ellicott indicated, it was fairly close, you know, when we looked at the, at the results. But I just wanted to emphasize that the process that we utilized is one that's been established by the city specifically for the purpose of deciding or determining who we should be giving contracts to based on their, their results. And I think you just mentioned who the five individuals were that were a part of the, of the city staff that did the evaluation. I just might point out that all of those folks have either a direct or indirect contact and use of the results of that, of that program. And, you know, it was an independent and, you know, one that was not, you know, not any other influence other than the five folks that were a part of that, that group. I, I looked at it, and I saw that the, again, while it was close, that the selection provides the highest return for the city. It will not require conversion effort, and I'm not sure if we gave, or we weren't able to put any kind of a value on the conversion that would be required if we did in fact change. And the third thing is, and I think we've talked about it, and we want to establish that this would be a three-year contract, would be, would be looked at at the end of each year on the basis of the performance against the standards that have been set, and that we would have the opportunity to terminate that contract if we felt that that was necessary, and go back out for the, for, you know, a new bid, go through a new bid process. So, we're not really tied to a full three-year contract. You know, we're going to be looking, we, being the long-range committee, will, will look at that and make recommendations to the council, so.
What are those new standards? I mean, we need to talk about that, what they were and what they are.
Right now, we had 10% for the collection rate for false alarms and 25% for the court collection fees. What we recommended and why we went forward and asked them for a three-year projection was for them to tell us what that standard would be through the term of the contract, so that we would take that and use that, the numbers they provided to us and what they said. they said they will collect, as the number. So in the instance of, the, and if you look at the screen, the instance of Linebarger, that number, again, would be 43.5%, 44, and 45 for the court collections, 26, 26 and a half, 27 on the false alarms.
You know, I, I had a little bit different take on this. In terms of their performance, and in terms, one is that I look at, into all of these, and they're so close in terms of what they do. So the difference between what they do and how they actually produce became my greatest concern. I could not see the city going with a new contract just to change to end up getting a year less in collections by doing so. That was the first. And that affects our bottom line, our budget, and everything. But on the other hand, Linebarger has done exactly what the other companies say that they would do in the sense of their percentages. They came in at 25%. They have worked and built theirs way up to, what, 40-some percent as last year?
Yes, sir.
So the proposals track the performance that's already existing. You know, I can see if we, if a company is not performing well, that we change contracts. But, but to go from 40-some percent to what is being proposed in the first year of the new contracts only simply means that we're taking in less money that, for the city for that one year. Plus, there's converging time, and it has to have a cost as associated with staff involvement, and there has to be some catch-up time with the new company. This, these companies make money for us, and we don't pay them out front. They don't make any money, they don't get any money. I presume that, assume that's the way, that's, that's the way it works. But only, but in looking at all the other companies, I think all the other companies were good as well. But I look at it in terms of what is the dollar impact today it has on the city.
And that first year.
Yeah, especially that first year.
I, I am a, I'm a big advocate that the city should be an equal employer, given opportunity to everybody, provided that they all have the equal qualifications and projections. And looking at this number, the first year, if we decided to go with the new company, we will, we will be losing 10%, correct?
Based on their projection, yes, sir.
Okay. And then on the subsequent years, the second year, the new company will recoup 2% higher than the existing company, 2%. And the third year will be 5% higher than the, the current provider. So is that why the staff and the committee recommend it that way? Because look at the numbers, it doesn't make up for the, the last, the first year 10% loss. You know, if you recoup it on the following year, 2% and 5%. With that, too, it's still less than 10% that we lose immediately. I mean, should we give, give them an opportunity to explain? I mean, do we have both companies here?
We do have representation from the two.
Should we hear from them to see what they have to say, Mayor?
Um, Bill, can I ask your question one quick before you sit down?
Can, can I finish my request first? I mean, I'm still, it's not done yet.
We can ask them, sure.
So can, can you explain that?
What Councilman Wynn is asking, Mike, is why, why 3%, I mean, 10% less in your first year? Because that's 10% that the city is not going to get. And it doesn't drive to make it up over the next two years either, to make up 10%. Yeah, it only makes up, what Danny's saying, it makes up 7%. So I'm saying.
You're asking me, Mayor?
Yeah, I think what Danny would like is an explanation as to why, in the first year, you all would be at 33% on the court and fees compared to 43% for Linebarger, 20% for you on your false alarms compared to 26% through Linebarger. Take McCrery out of the picture for right now. Is anyone here from McCrery? Okay, I don't want to leave him out. So he's asking, why is there, why did your forecast show so much difference in that first year?
We take into account any transitional issues there will be between firms, cooperation. Software is fine, y'all work within code, so we have the software to take care of that. My projections were conservative in nature, and the, the reason why we're a little higher in the second and the third year is we'll have the balance of the delinquencies a couple extra years, which would give us an inherent advantage. Linebarger's been there for 10, 10, 11, 12 years, and so they've already been working much of your balance. And so we're going to get it all as new balances while they've had it for 10, 11, 12 years. And so I think factoring that in, as well as the transition year period, you know, you'll have a new court clerk, sure she'll do a great job. But there's always those types of issues when we work with a new city that we haven't worked with before. I'm not saying, Mayor, that we can't hit a 43% first-year rate. All I could say is that, and we'll try, but that first year, I just want to be conservative.
What does 10% equate to? In dollars?
Dollars.
Give me a ballpark. I don't, I'm not going to hold you.
Apologize, I don't know the dollar number off, Maricela.
I believe we currently have approximately $3 million that's outstanding in warrants that could be collected. So it could be.
So we're talking about $300,000?
Potentially.
Potentially, yes, sir.
I just want to throw that number out there, because it doesn't seem like it's a lot of money, but it is a lot of money.
Yes, sir.
For the city. Yeah. And that's, and I know that's potential. That's not an absolute, but it's a risk. $300,000 on a budget that we're already struggling on is a significant number, Mike.
My deal, if we had to change companies, we would have to do whatever it is we need to do.
Yeah.
You know, based on these company performance, and their predicament, system of cost of bill, that's what we would have to do. But I don't think we ought to do that if we don't have to do that and reduce our budgetary efforts.
And we have, we, when did we put, let's see, these are going to be the new standards going forward, right? So we're going to, we're going to have a full year. We've not had these new standards of, what is it going to be, 45?
It would be what State Post.
Up there, you can see.
43.
Going to be 45, huh?
35.
43, 5, 44, 45. And that begins now, and a year from now, if Linebarger is not at 43, 5.
Comes back to council.
Comes back to the same committee to review.
Yeah.
And 44, and 45, those, those same thing, and 26, 26, 27, all come back to this council, or come back to the Long Range Planning Committee.
If they do not hit their benchmarks.
And that group, if they don't hit that number.
Correct.
Now, if they hit that number.
Then it continues on.
There's now review.
Correct.
Just want to make sure everybody stands there.
And I was so glad that we did not automatically, the council did not automatically renew with Linebarger. We decided, you know, to hold off so that we give an opportunity to aid company to narrow it down. But looking at the numbers, I mean, I tried to find a justification, but if we lose 10%, would equate to $300,000 the first year, and the subsequent years will not make up for that. So it's going to be a tough decision.
So, Bill, the 43% collection rate that Linebarger did, is that over a 12-month period, or is that over the 10-year? Is it an average, the last?
The year, and this was, they presented last year, or, excuse me.
That's what they did last year.
In their, or, excuse me, in their, this year, when they proposed their services. And it was for the past year. Richard Hill is here, along with Brian Gross, representing the firm.
I think, Bill, I think her question was, I mean.
Yes.
The 43% is like an act of, me, too, I want to clarify that. I had the same question. So the 43%, those actual performance.
Yes.
Not an accumulate, accumulated numbers, like they add 4%, 4% over the 10 years, and they multiply it by 10 to get 43. That's not the case, right?
No.
43% is the actual performance.
Exactly.
And the other thing we consider, I mean, on the staff level, was that we've seen that they have done that. Rather than looking at a projection, we're looking at something they have done, and we have proof of at this time.
So what would ever, if, if we're going off the basis of their performance, what would ever be a reason for us to change? I mean, if we don't ever want to lose that 10% to give another company an opportunity to come in and, you know, do business with us, what would be, what would be the reason to ever?
We will be reviewing annually their performance against the standards in the contract. If they don't meet those standards, then, again, we'll bring that to the attention of the Long Range Planning Committee from there, probably bring forth the fact they didn't meet their standards.
So only if they underperform, would, would there be a reason for us to?
And that's the way the current five-year contract, which is in, in actuality, is in year, ending year three, is structured.
Okay.
And we have the ability, I think, also to raise the bar.
Yeah.
And. We can continue to raise the bar.
You can after this three-year contract's done.
Exactly.
Yes.
Right.
Well, I would.
Has been 10? Since 2003.
Yeah. I mean, we've raised the bar a jump.
Right. But during, yeah, during this 36-month period, you can't, you can't adjust whatever, whichever one you firm you go with.
Unless we change firms.
Unless you fire, yes, you fire the firm, and then you go out for, you can't.
Yeah, you can't.
Yeah, and I, I would add that just the, the, the performance of return is not the only thing that we would be looking at. I think one of the things that we looked at was to make sure that our folks work well with the, whoever the, the vendor might be, and also whether or not we started, we get any complaints or anything from our citizens saying that, you know, they're not being treated, addressed, or handled, you know, professionally. So I think there are other reasons why we could, in fact, reexamine the contract and determine whether or not we wanted to, to terminate and, and go through the process again, so.
I want to clarify one thing, though. And this council is not in the business of making deals to bring in new people. This council should be in the business of making deals that's in the best interest of our citizens. And if that means renewing a contract with somebody in the best interest of the citizens, then that's what we ought to be doing. You know, if, if Linebarger doesn't perform, it's, it's pretty evident that there are some companies out here that could perform, but whoever we do then, it's pretty evident that that first year that we make a change, and we make a valid change that our citizens can understand, they're going to accept that, you know, because we'll have to go with somebody else, you know? But, but we shouldn't be changing just to be giving somebody some different business unless somebody is not doing something.
Robin, you had some questions? I don't know if, okay, sorry. Just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity.
No, I think, you know, it goes back to the conversation we had, what, four months ago, when we said that we just wanted to make sure that other people had an opportunity, that we didn't, it wasn't inclusive of one particular firm or another. We wanted to give people an opportunity. I'm really surprised that there were eight, that there were eight agencies out there that even wanted it. Normally, there's about two or three at most, and, and the most we've ever had, so. It is an opportunity for other people to, to be in. That's what I wanted, how the deal was. Be fair, and this other, the other half of this contract comes up in February.
Correct.
Right? Which is the.
But it's a different contract.
Right, but I'm, I'm meaning the other half, meaning.
Yeah, as far as our collections.
The delinquent taxes.
Property tax.
That's property taxes, and, and February, so it's an opportunity to put your pencil, both firms that are here. You hear what this council is looking for, they're looking for ways to make money, not lose it.
Collect money, not make money.
Well, make our money. Yeah. For our budget, to collect what's owed us, and unfortunately, the delinquency side of both of those are getting worse as the economy worsens, so.
If I can clarify, we're going to start the process in February, so.
Yes. I just want them to understand that they have an opportunity to sharpen the pencil and go through the same process they did here, so.
I'll make a motion.
Any other questions? There was a motion by Councilman Emery, and a second by Mayor Pro Tem White. If there are no other questions, we'll vote, and that motion is to go with Linebarger, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, guys, sharpen pencils. All right, item 10, our ordinance is 10A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City taxes emitting the general budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013, and ending June 30, 2014, transferring various appropriations among accounts, appropriating supplemental revenue to various funds accounts, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take steps necessary to accomplish such transfers, making certain findings, and containing certain provisions relating to the subject.
And this is a one-reading ordinance, so is there a motion to approve it?
Move to approve.
Councilman Smith made the motion. Who seconded it?
Kenny.
I second it.
Councilman Wynn made the second. All those in favor, motion carries, item 10B.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City taxes authorizing the mayor to execute and city secretary to attest the Ninth Amendment to the Sienna Plantation Joint Development Agreement between the City of Missouri City and DeWalt Land Limited, providing for severability and providing for other matters relating to the subject.
This is the first of two readings, yes, sir?
It is the first of two readings. As you have recently recalled, we've had the Seventh and Eighth Amendment. This is the Ninth Amendment. The Ninth Amendment deals with what we commonly refer to as the Schindler property, which is located south of the proposed toll road and on each side of Sienna Parkway.
And has no houses in it.
It's vacant right now. There is another tract that this amendment does not, that's included in this tract, or tract D, but it's down near Bee's Creek and McKeever Lane. It's going to remain, right now it's on SD. It was set aside initially for commercial. It remains set aside for commercial in the land use plan. This amendment does, and, and I'm going to try to remember all of it without looking, two significant things. One, it changes the land use for the Schindler tracks up near the toll road. Closer to the intersection, sets it aside for mixed use. Further from the intersection, sets it aside for residential. Up till this time, or at least up till the Seventh Amendment, it had been set aside all as commercial. In the Seventh Amendment, an allotment of 870 multifamily were moved into the track that is on the left side of the toll road as you're going north. That would be to the west side.
The north side. Northwest side.
What, what this does is it allows that allotment, because mixed use includes commercial, and includes condos, and includes multifamily. It allows that allotment to be scattered on each side of Sienna. The residential allotment proposes 400 homes and 132 acres, or roughly three homes per acre, which frankly is fairly decent-sized lots for the development we normally see.
And these would be all inside the city limits?
Mm-hmm. Part of it's inside the city limits. The southern tract I talked about is inside the city limits, and one side of the toll road is, I'm sorry, one side of the tract up near the, up near the toll road is within the city limits, and if I'm not mistaken, that's going to be on the east side.
Is it shown on that map?
It is, and it's on, it's that on the east side. It has the pink and the yellow.
All the commercial is in the city limits. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this amendment?
Second.
And this amendment, this is all within Sienna North. This would make this all within Sienna.
This is all within Sienna North, that's always been called Sienna North.
Sienna South.
It is not the original Sienna South, or the Hillwood Sienna South. This is only.
Nothing to do with.
This is a Schindler tract where Schindler's.
Property is, yeah.
Property was. And that's a done deal.
Has nothing to do with taxes.
Yeah, has nothing to do with taxes.
Has no impact on any utility districts.
No. What it does do.
Already in utility districts.
They're already in utility, that's my point. I want to, I mean, we've been beat up a few times by misinformation. I want to make sure when we do this amendment, that it's very clear from this table that it impacts nobody's property tax in terms of their utility district tax.
That's right. That's right.
They already in there.
Sienna South, which that person was saying, based on our city tax rate, had nothing to do with Sienna North. It had to do with all that vacant acreage at the end of Sienna Parkway.
Yes.
Okay, because I want the people out there not to get upset by bad information being spread by some people who don't ask us, that make up their own stories and go out and tell this stuff.
They don't pay taxes in the city either.
So, we all correct, right?
What's more important to this, and I see Doug and guys that are out here, is that with them now controlling that property, the main thing is they now can continue with the toll road.
That's right.
Through this piece of property, and we're not held hostage as we have been in the past, and eventually hook it up to, I guess, the other side of LJ Parkway or in that area, so that literally could go from 59.
That's right.
Through University and actually get on the Fort Ben Toll Road without ever getting on Highway 6.
Yes.
That is what is more important on this piece of property than any other thing I can imagine. Yeah, and with us, I guess, originally guaranteeing a million dollars and Larry guaranteeing a million dollars that the toll road would be successful, I think they gave up on that after the second year. Make sure we, have we ever gotten our million-dollar commitment negated? Rich, have we?
I don't think it's been negated.
All right, I want to make sure that we're not still owing that million, and no, Larry not wanting to, so.
It's over, we can spend it again.
I'll bet you can.
I don't, but that is an important part of what Larry and him and, I see Doug's out here, Larry and him are trying to do with that Sienna property and their negotiations with Raymond Schindler's family is now finalized, and they can move forward with it, and we can too, because it's an important thing for the city. Yep.
But, I tell you, I am so glad that Johnson Development now have this property.
And we all are. All right, there was a, unless, Doug, you got anything you want to say, or Rich, anything you want to say?
By the way.
There were 10 commandments in the Bible, so are we going to see 10 amendments in this table? Yeah, right? When we get to 10, you know, we're going to cut it off, so get it all in this one.
That was Moses, not Paul. That was Moses.
All right, there was a motion by Councilman White, I mean, Mayor Pro-Tim White, and a second by Councilman Ellen Cad. All those in favor? Motion carries, move forward. All right, item 11, a resolution. Thank you, Doug, for coming, Rich. 11A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, casting its vote for the election of a member of the Board of Directors of the Fort Ben Central Appraisal District for the two-year term commencing on January 1, 2014, and containing other provisions related thereto.
Mr. Mayor, I move that our 100 votes go to Albert Glover.
Second. Very good. And this is what I explained to you all last meeting would come up, so this will be good. We'll have a representative on CAD by you all doing this, because it guarantees that him a spot. All those in favor?
And it's a clarification, 95.
95 votes, yeah.
Rounds up to 100.
Why they put 100 in?
The resolution I have prepared is 95.
Whatever, it only takes one.
If we could just seek a clarification from council, we will clarify with Fort Ben CAD the appropriate number of votes and cast the entirety of them for.
Without the other agencies, our 100 votes won't do anything.
Are you all familiar with that, the process? There's five openings, but if one of those five members does not get a single vote, they don't get a position just because there's five openings. So, by us casting this vote for Albert, who lives here in Missouri City, former council member, now all five of those candidates who are up for those five spots will get elected to those five spots. And I had asked that the MUDs nominate Albert as their nominee, so thank them for doing so. I think he'd be a great member for the CAD, and he was a great councilperson, too, so just explanation, that's what it is. All right, 11B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest an agreement between Sienna Plantation Municipal Utility District Number One and the City of Missouri City, Texas, for the transfer of a wastewater treatment plant permit and reserve wastewater treatment plant capacity.
Mayor, council, in effect, all this agreement does, this central local agreement does, is it turns, takes a permit that's currently in Sienna MUD 1's name and places that permit for Sienna Wastewater Treatment Plant Number Three in the city's name. The advantage of this is to provide capacity in that wastewater plant for the previously approved agenda item out there. The city has the ability to issue capacity letter, letters of commitment based upon actual flows received in the plant, whereas MUDs have a different structure, where a lot of capacity is set up on paper, but does not actually realize at the plant. The important thing to realize is Sienna MUD 1 would be responsible for all costs of operations, permitting, permitting renewal, if there's a violation or discharge violation, everything that they're on the hook for today, they would stay on the hook for. This is no dollars from the city, just permits in our name. We went to the Infrastructure Committee, and the Infrastructure Committee did forward a positive recommendation.
Very good, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
No dollars from the city.
He likes that. All right, Councilman Wynn made the motion, Councilman Emery made the second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Are there any announcements? Let's see, we have the Thanksgiving luncheon.
It's Thursday.
Thursday. We got, that's December.
Tomorrow.
Phil the Squad.
Tomorrow night, you have the Board Commission Thank You Dinner.
Board Commission Thank You Dinner tomorrow night. We got Phil the Squad Car going on right now.
And Saturday, if you've got time on Saturday morning, come on out to the Public Safety Center, and we'll be needing help as far as taking in donations.
For that, very good. Anything else? Any councilmember's got any?
Did we give a report on the?
We have, we have opposed, exactly.
We don't.
Very good, huh?
We given a report on the delegation visit, Mayor? We didn't, didn't we? The Chinese delegation visit.
Okay. I don't remember.
We knew.
I know. I know. Yeah, I mean, we took them all over the place, and maybe we had, you know what, maybe when you give that report, Stacy can put some pictures of them in the fire truck, and Stacy.
Stacy.
Yeah. You know, get some, get some of those, get some of those pictures of them in the fire truck, and, yeah.
Would you give us some like that?
Oh, of the 10 million, or the 3 million?